Good evening. Welcome to the October 26th zoning board of adjustments meeting. Our next meeting will be Wednesday, November 30th in this room at 6:30. Can we stand for the pledge of allegiance, please? Ben, would you read the preamble, please?
Good evening to those in attendance and watching at home. For the benefit of those who have not previously attended a zoning board hearing, the procedure is as follows. The petitions will be heard in the order they appear on the agenda. However, the chair may change the order at their discretion. The board will treat all petitioners, the representatives of butters and other interested parties fairly and with respect. The petitioner will be asked to give an overview of their petition and read through their responses to the criteria applicable to their case, allowing for the board to ask questions after each item. State law and local ordinances establish the criteria that must be met in order for the board to grant approval to a petition, and it is a petitioner's responsibility to demonstrate that they've met each criteria. Following the presentation, the chair will open the floor to public comment either in favor or opposed to the request. If necessary, an opportunity for rebuttal will be offered to the petitioner and public. However, the discussion will not be allowed to devolve into back and forth arguments. All comments shall be directed towards the chair. Should a question be asked, the chair will pose the question to the petitioner. Afterward, the chair will close the public hearing and the board will deliberate and vote on the petition. At this time, please silence all mobile devices.
Thank you, Ben. To let you know that we have only three members in the board tonight, so in order for any petitions to pass, all three of us will need to approve of it, yea of it. If one of us nays it, then the petition fails. We'll give you the opportunity or the option to postpone and delay till next month meeting if somebody is uncomfortable with that. Everybody would like to proceed? Thank you. What I'd like to do is everybody who is planning on speaking tonight, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth and hold truth and nothing but the truth? Thank you. Like to start with the first petition. Bear with me in the name, William Lestowska, petitioner, and Joan Lester, trustee of the Joan A. Lester Revocable Trust, variance under section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to allow the creation of a proposed lot requiring subdivision approval from the planning board containing approximately 167.11 feet of road frontage, whereas 200 feet is required. The parcel is located at 94 Amherst Street in the R2 Residential by Soils and Aquafor Conservation District, tax map 4C, Lot 460, case number ZBA 2022-40.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, I'm attorney Greg Michael here on behalf of the applicant. With me is Eli Leno from my office at Bernstein Sure, who will be assisting me this evening. I will be giving you an overview of this since I'm familiar with some of the history of kind of where we are with this with this particular project. It's not as straightforward. It is somewhat straightforward, but I think a little bit of the history is important to it. The variance that we're looking at relates to the residual or 13 acre parcel. If you can see that, sir. Okay, that's here. If you follow the yellow, that's the entire parcel, looping around like this. At the end of the day, the plan is to go to the planning board and subdivide this, and basically we end up with three lots. The orange lot, which is a conforming lot in size and frontage, and the house is already on that lot, that's a conforming lot. Lot 460-3, which is five acres, will also be a conforming lot with frontage and size. Lot 460 is certainly conforming in size. It's 13 acres. However, the frontage that you see here, and I have the figures in my notes, what you'll find is this 59.11 feet that's located here, which is not contiguous with the balance, which is 108 feet. So essentially, what we're looking at is a 92-foot frontage variance, because in Merrimack, frontage must be contiguous to support the subdivided lot. But we do have, again, enough for a 50-foot road strip in this location if a person wanted to build a town road, which is not here, that would be planning board. They also have more than sufficient area to put a road in here. So it's one parcel left that requires zoning zoning relief. The property is currently owned by the Joan Lester Trust. That's Bill Lestoka's sister, and that came down from Margaret Lestoka Lester, his mother. And in her trust, and one of the reasons we're trying to get this resolved, I've only been involved in this of a short period of time, and I was not involved in these trusts. I'm just, I'm here to try and work through this issue. But in the trust, Mr. William Lestoka, the petitioner, was to receive five acres of land consistent with his work of storage equipment and materials, which he used the property for for many years. And that area is consistent with the area of the five acre lot that we're looking at here. And that trust said that he would get five acres of this land. It's specific. It's there's no equivocation that he would get five acres. And this sat and has languished for a number of years. Margaret Lestoka died in 2009, and again, the people that were working with us, it's just kind of been sitting. That's okay, but we need to get this wrapped up. I would remind the board that you cannot subdivide land by will or trust. In other words, if you write out a will that says, I'm going to give my son five acres of my land, you can say it, which is what was said, but I can assure you that that does not create a legal subdivision of land. That must be done through proper zoning compliance and planning board review. So that's kind of what brings us here today. In your packet, there was an alternative plan. Now, I only show that just as a, I don't want to say it's throwaway evidence. I don't want to say that to you. What we could do, Mr. Lestoka owns these two lots, Lot 459 and 4, what, 458 and 459. They are not merged. They're separate lots of record. They are not merged. He could, depending on what happens, merge the lots. They're his lots, he can merge them. And then we could cut this pork chop end off some of the frontage, add it to Lot 460, and we could pack our bags and we could leave the room. We don't want to do that. This particular strip of land would not be used for anything. It serves no useful purpose, and quite frankly, it's poor planning in terms of overall later development of the Lot 460, if in fact it's developed. It doesn't make any sense. We could do it, we don't want to do it. It involves two extra steps. We think it's not good planning and not good design of land. If I thought it added something, that would be one thing, but it adds nothing. We can't increase the size of it very much, because then we start rendering the other parcel nonconforming. So I only show that to you kind of in passing, but that's certainly not good planning and not what we're proposing and what we don't believe is the right thing to do. A little bit of of history here. Before coming here today, I dug back into the records, and I have the interesting binder of the zoning in Merrimack from 1953, from when it started through 1974, which is kind of the key, a key date when things start to become a bit more formalized. But we had some zoning from 53. We didn't have a planning board, but we had some zoning. And I would point out to you, in looking at Lot 457, 458, these lots in here, that back then, when these were actually created by deed, the requirement was was 15,000 square feet in 58 with 100 feet of frontage, 100 feet. So back in the day, if a person did this, you know, their expectation was that they were working within the confines of zoning. Now, we all know zoning changes. It has changed. There's no secret to that. But I would point out at the time, the expectations, the ability to use the land was 100 feet of frontage, which we have. Well, we have more than that, but it's not contiguous. And in fact, this lot's nonconforming. These lots, if you separate them, very likely don't meet the frontage requirement either. So it's not a mysterious problem, if you will, in this particular area. I'm sure Eli will comment on that briefly under hardship, but that's one of the unique aspects of this land, was that it's been there for a while. It was subjected to to subdivision by deed, so it's rather unique in its in its environment. I wanted to do this this evening to kind of give you a heads up on kind of the background of some of this. We think it's important to do this and do it right. We think it's important to get this resolved. We're looking to the zoning board to grant a fairly straightforward variance. I recognize nothing's really straightforward. I understand that. I've been doing this for a long time, but we think this is the proper way to handle this this situation that the trustees and the owners are faced with. I'd like to turn it over now to Eli, who'll take you briefly through the five zoning criteria.
Thank you, Attorney Michael. As noted, my name is Eli Leno. I'm an attorney at Bernstein Sure. I will go through the five criteria, hopefully relatively briefly, but obviously will expound further if the board needs anything beyond what Attorney Michael and I have will say. As noted, this proposed plan and the variance relief required is not contrary to the public interest. We'd be creating lots that are zoning compliant with the exception of this 13-acre lot, which far exceeds what is necessary in this zone and is compliant but for the contiguous frontage requirement. The New Hampshire Supreme Court has noted that frontage requirements are often a basis to prevent overcrowding in zoning, and certainly in a 13-acre lot where two or two and a half in this neighborhood generally are required, we're not going to cause overcrowding under that framework. I know that this board likes to ask questions after each criteria, so.
Does the board have any questions? Ben Lynn, please continue.
Thank you. Criteria number two is that the spirit of the ordinance is observed. This generally goes hand in hand with the first criteria, but in terms of complying with the spirit of the ordinance, but for that frontage piece, not having the adequate contiguous frontage, everything else within the ordinance is compliant. So again, but for the needed relief, I think we're we're very much in compliance with the spirit of the ordinance and what we're trying to ask for tonight for relief. Questions?
Please continue.
Substantial justice under the zoning ordinance and under the state law is generally a balancing test between public and private rights to use of this lot. Again, if this variance is not granted, as you've seen from the alternative plan, there is a less clean option with this sort of odd tail drawn onto this lot to make it ordinance compliant, but with no benefit to the public and no, so without a variance here and without that option, then obviously the private right to use these 13 acres is greatly diminished with no additional benefit to the public or to the neighborhood at large or that anyone would notice in this location. So I think the balancing tends toward granting this variance.
Questions? Please continue.
Thank you. This will not diminish the value of surrounding properties. Again, this comes back to an attempt not to overcrowd certain areas of this town, and with a 13-acre compliant lot, again, but for this one frontage issue, this is is compliant and meets the standards and is big and will not really have any effect on the neighboring lots, especially when two-thirds of the different directions on this plan are owned by other members who will take under this trust.
Questions? Number five?
With regard to the hardship, the unique nature of this property and the meeting the general public purpose, if the lot that was carved out of that in the prior version of the zoning ordinance had not been there or was done while leaving the 100 feet of contiguous frontage, the change in the the zoning ordinance over the years is what made this not an allowable subdivision by right. So it creates a hardship based on the unique remaining shape of the property and that, if you will, two-pronged piece over on that Amherst Road frontage. So it is unique in the zone, and that creates the hardship. And then for the second prong of that test, the use is reasonable. This is a residentially zoned use. This would be a residential use. And again, as the case law cited, if it's permitted by right, it's considered reasonable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Ben?
Well, the only thing we can use it for is a residential dwelling or or if you were able to build a road and comply with subdivision regulations, which we're not here talking about. That's a whole different issue, but it would still have to be zoning compliant, or we'd have to come back here and discuss with you something else. But right now, the only thing that could be used for is a single family dwelling without further, I would expect zoning and planning approval. That's not planned. The only thing we're here before you folks tonight on is the allowance to subdivide. That's all we're here for.
And that again is with the goal of creating that five acre lot as mentioned in the trust document.
That's correct.
Then at that point, you would go to the planning board for those.
Yeah, we'd have to, we'd have to do other other things to deal with this, I would expect. Again, depending on the plan, I, we're here just for this tonight, okay? Thank you.
I'd like to open this up to the public. If anybody would like to speak in favor of this? Yes? If you're going to speak to this, you'll need to come to the microphone, please. Okay.
Do you want me to point this out again, or are you? That's the only thing I would ask, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if she wants me to say something about it or just just look at it.
Well, you.
Here.
If you could give you a name and your address, please?
I'm sorry, Janet Paneth, on at 64 Meeting House Road. And.
Yes.
I'm in a butter. Yes. And I was just curious, because I'm familiar with the area, but you're talking about cutting out different parcels of it. And I'm not sure I understood, because I couldn't see what you were pointing at.
May I respond? Yes, you may.
Sorry, man. They want to tape it. This is the existing house. This would be the existing house lot, which would be conforming. Next is the five acre parcel to satisfy the trust requirements, five acres here with frontage unatticable. The remaining, the remainder parcel is the 13 acre parcel, and what we're discussing of the frontage issues here. Nothing is really changing as a result of this meeting. What we're trying to do is to to satisfy the satisfy the trust obligations and do our best to create a conforming lot situation under current zoning. Does that help you understand this?
Okay, what I would like to do is, I prefer that the two of you not have a discussion. If the two of you could step aside for a moment, and if she would like to take the seat, you can pose some questions to the board. They would hear the questions, and then we'll invite them back to to respond to us.
Okay. I just have one more question.
Sure, come on up to the microphone and, and like I said, you'll be speaking to the board, and then they will have the opportunity to respond to your questions.
Okay. All I wanted to do is to clarify that the parcel in question. Yes. Is the sort of the large part in the back in that thinner area that goes up through the middle?
Oh, I'm not seeing.
Take the mic.
Take the mic and point to it.
Oh.
And then quite possibly, we could answer.
4C-460-3 includes all of this and that?
Yes. Yes.
And that's the area that's in question?
Yes. Thank you. Would anybody else like to respond in favor? Would anybody like to respond against this petition? Would the petitioners like to add anything else before we?
No, thank you very much for your time this evening.
I'd like to close the public session, have a discussion amongst the board.
I'm looking at this, and I see no reason why we shouldn't do this. I mean, if they can do it by adding that little panhandle, looks like Oklahoma, which serves absolutely no purpose and just confuses the issue, I see no reason why we can't grant the variance.
Agreed with him? I agree. I agree. I think it's senseless to make them go through those extra steps where whereas they're going to have it anyway.
Yep.
Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion in the case of William Lestoka, petitioner, and Joan A. Lester, trustee of the Joan A. Lester Revocable Trust owner, that we grant the variance under section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to allow the creation of a proposed lot requiring subdivision approval from the planning board containing approximately 167.11 feet of road frontage, whereas 200 feet is required. The parcel is located at 92 Amherst Road in the R2 Residential by Soils and Aquafor Conservation Districts, tax map 4C, Lot 460, case ZBA 2022-40. And I'm making this motion subject to the fact that the petition has met all five of the criteria on the variance and that the determination is that the petitioner's responses to the statutory criteria were sufficient and proved each criteria was met, and we adopt the petitioner's responses as the board's finding in fact.
Do I have a second?
Adding a condition that they receive planning board approval for.
Yes. Yes.
Petition motion by Lynn, seconded by Ben, all in favor? I passes 300. Thank you very much. Don't need to say it, but I do need to say it. You have 30 days that somebody could contest this. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have 8 Jennifer Drive LLC, petitioner owner, the variance under section 2.02.4B of the zoning ordinance to permit a memory case use to be added to an existing assisted living facility in the I Industrial District where is not permitted use. The parcel is located at 8 Jennifer Drive in the I Industrial Aquafor Conservation and Elderly Housing overlay district, tax map D4D-4, Lot 64, case number ZBA 2022-41.
Good evening. My name is Matt Peterson with Keach Norsham Associates, here representing the proposed variance at 8 Jennifer Street for the applicant, who's John Marino. Marino, sorry, little slip on me there. It's been a long week already. As outlined, usually by the staff, but not today, this parcel is located at 8 Jennifer Street in Merrimack, New Hampshire. It's on the south side of the road. The aerial on your screen right there will show the parcel. It's where the sun was rising and came right to our building here. It's approximately 1.1 acres in size and is existing two-story building on it. The facility is known as Rose Haven Assisted Living Facility, and we were in front of this board in March to ask for an increase in allowable beds on site. The original building had 28 beds. They closed down in 2021, I believe it was. The family that had owned it forever couldn't make the numbers work. John came forward and purchased the property. We then worked at doing some internal work to try and get the bed counts up to deal with the numbers. I would say unfortunately for the applicant, they've learned a lot in the last six months about this type of facility. This is an assisted living facility, and the criteria that people have to fall under to be able to be accepted to this is extremely high. Most people fall into the next category, which is memory care, which is why we're here tonight. We'd like to increase, we'd like to build a 50-bed memory care facility on the back half of this building. However, there are nothing in your regulations that allow us to do that, so we have to come for the board for the use variance. The second thing is, is that the requirements for memory care are extremely stringent. Things like the person has to be able to shelter in place in their room for four hours if there's an emergency or there's a fire. Doesn't work with the existing building that's a wood structure building. So we've got to build a new facility up to new codes that then could handle, you know, those types of requirements that are there. I will tell this board, we're asking for the, tonight, the application is for 50 beds of memory care. We came to you for 40 beds of assisted living in March. There's very little chance, and we've got to go through site plan and work it through, that we'd actually have 90 beds on this site. What we think we're probably going to do is the new building that's memory care, we will probably house the kitchen and recreation type areas in the existing building where we thought we were going to get the extra beds that we came for you in March for, and build the new building to the new codes that can meet fire, safety, and all the state requirements for memory. The state board has to come down and sign off on his building. So yes, the application is in front of you for 50 memory care beds to be added to the site. Again, once we get into some of the munition of the building now, just to be honest with you, we're down to three assisted living people at the facility because of the criteria, and most of the calls we get are actually memory care type people. We have to go out there, we have to do an assessment of them, and then they fall into a different category. So we are getting phone calls, there is a need for this. It's just the facility they bought doesn't really meet the new requirements that are out there. So we're trying to find a way to key and tee, there's only one facility in this in your town, up and operating to serve some of the people that are out there. So that's kind of the background, why we're back here in six months, and why we're looking to do something different, something different on the site, expand the site and utilize it for that. Just to give you an overview, if you hadn't gone down there, take a look at it, but this is the existing building that's been there for about three decades now. We did the survey last time we came to you. We did not have a survey from us. We were using a separate one for the zoning application. We've actually gone out and surveyed the property, and then we put together what we'd like to do is attach a second building to the backside here. We would have at-grade access here from the. We would have at-grade access here from the top half, and then we'd walk around the backside here, we'd drop down, and we'd have some outside recreation area in the back, potentially some drainage in the back as well. So, that's kind of the overview of the project. Just to get into the criteria that we have, it must not be contrary to the public interest. I would say that granting the use variance will not be contrary to the public interest. More specifically, the request variance will not unduly conflict with the basic purpose of the relevant zoning provisions, as it will neither alter the essential character of the area nor threaten public health, safety, or welfare. Again, this is a facility that's been operating for three decades here. Anybody that's lived in this area understands the traffic that's through here, and we do not believe that this is contrary to the public interest. I will say the existing neighborhood will remain unaffected by its expansion as the proposed use of the property is not expected to change one of, is to change. The purpose of the zoning ordinance is to ensure similar uses throughout the existing zone, where this has been an operating existing living facility for decades. There will be no character change to the area, and as such, the applicant believes this variance is not contrary to the public interest.
Any questions?
I'd have a quick question. When you're building this new facility, will you be upgrading the existing facility to meet the codes? Or is that, is that why the kitchen and stuff, which?
So, the, we cannot change the wood studs that are already in the existing building. If anybody's driven up to Allenstown lately, I did a memory care age restricted facility up there for a company out of Connecticut. They hired an architect that wasn't from here. They built that whole building, and it does, it's not built correctly for memory care, and they're not allowed to put memory care in it. So, it's, it's a structural thing. It's not, it's very difficult to change if you don't do it from the ground up.
Okay, thank you. Number two?
It must be consistent with the spirit of the ordinance. Again, the applicant believes that the spirit of the ordinance is to ensure similar uses throughout the industrial zone, and this type of use has been operating for decades at this location. And as such, the applicant believes variance would be consistent with the spirit of the ordinance. And again, you don't allow any of these in town, you have to come to you to talk about this, and I think where you already had one, makes a lot of sense.
Questions? Number three?
It must result in substantial justice being done. As the board knows, the applicant sought and was granted a variance earlier this year to increase the number of beds within the existing facility to comment the growing need for the available assisted living beds. Substantial justice we've done with the applicant if the memory care addition were to be approved because of further assist families in the area who require special care, which over, as I just stated, which over the last six months, we have seen the unbelievable need for this type of use in Merrimack, and as such, substantial justice for the whole town would be done by granting this variance, we believe.
Questions?
You can put up to 90 units total there.
Mike, your mic please.
So, it's, if we're approved, you can put up to 90 units there. How many parking spaces do you have today?
Currently today, I think there's about seven, but they're not very well utilized. With our plan here, we've been talking, you know, staffing and stuff like that. I believe we got it up to 22?
I believe we have 20 additional. Okay. I'll leave it to them.
Okay.
Yeah, about 24 is what we've put so far here. Again, what we stated to you guys last time, out of the assisted living and 100% with the memory care, these people don't have cars. So, that was, it's mainly for our staff. Yes, they can come visit, and that's what we hope to happen. Unfortunately, as we've seen, but yes, they don't all come visit at one time. But yes, there are visitors, and we'll have parking for that. Okay.
Number four?
Must not diminish the value of surrounding properties. Again, this is expansion of existing use on the property, which the applicant believes will not diminish the value of surrounding properties. Again, it's expansion of existing use, it's been there for three decades or so.
Questions? Number five, please.
Owning to the following special conditions, the property distinguishes from other properties in the area. There's no substantial relationship between the general purpose of the ordinance and the specific violation being implied for. Lastly, it's an existing facility that's looking to expand for the purpose of providing a safe space for memory care patients, and is not allowed anywhere else in the town ordinance. As such, we believe that's a substantial relation. We believe there's no substantial relation that exists between the general purpose of the ordinance and the specific use of this property because of that.
Any questions?
And then the proposed use is a reasonable one. Again, the proposed use is a simple expansion of existing use to provide a safe place for many families seeking memory care assistance. The applicant believes this is a reasonable request to expand a facility that has been doing this for many decades. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are you all set?
I am good.
Okay. We'd like to open this up to the public. Would anybody like to speak in favor of this petition? Would anybody like to speak against this petition? Thank you. Would you like to add anything else in closing, before we close the session?
I think that, that outlines what we're looking for. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Public session is closed. The board, oh, Lynn?
Got a couple of quick questions. How many are in assisted living right now in the existing building?
Currently, we have three residents. And we're allowed 40.
And going forward, are you planning on keeping those 40 beds available for assisted living?
As I outlined earlier, because of the numbers of that, we believe that we're gonna utilize some of that space in there for a kitchen and recreation area for the memory care and balance.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you meant you were putting the kitchen in, in the new one.
No, we want to put it in the wood frame building.
And, uh, planning board will take care of that. Is the old building compliant with assisted living?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, great. I'm all set.
Thank you. I'd like to close the meet, public session, and the board will discuss and make motions accordingly.
Looking to me?
I think this is a pretty straightforward petition. We've already given them approval for the assisted living.
This is very different.
What's that?
This is very different.
Right, but it goes hand in hand.
There is a need.
Yes.
All around for this type of facility, and to have one in town goes to the visitor issue, and if they're in town, you're a lot more liable to get people coming to visit than if you have to go down to Nashua or Manchester or Milford or somewhere else. So, having this type of facility, and, and there's a desperate need to have the visitors come, so they need to be encouraged, so, and I know that's a hard thing to do, so.
Would someone like to make a motion?
I will make a motion unless Ben wants to do it. On the, the case of 8 Jennifer Drive LLC, petitioner and owner, I move we grant the variance under section 2.02.4, capital B, of the zoning ordinance to permit a memory care use to be added to an existing assisted living care facility in the I-1 Industrial District where it is not a permitted use. The parcel is located at 8 Jennifer Drive in the I-1 Industrial and Aquifer Conservation and Elderly Housing Overlay Districts, tax map 4D hyphen 4, lot 64, KCBA 2022 hyphen 41. And the board finds that the petition meets all five of the variance criteria, and has made a determination that the petitioners' responses to the statutory criteria were sufficient and proved each criterion was met, and adopts the petitioners' responses as the board's finding of fact, and this will be subject to planning board approval.
Second? Ben? Motion to accept by Lynn, seconded by Ben, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, approved, 3-0-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
And as always, you've got 30 days that somebody could protest.
Good luck.
With the welcome, Robert Hanson, petitioner, Ensure Oil and Chemical Corp., owner. Variance under section 2.02.4, capital B, of the zoning ordinance to permit an automotive sales use in the I-1 Industrial District where it is not permitted use. The parcel is located at 254 DW Highway in the I-1 Industrial Aquifer Conservation District, tax map 3D dash 2, lot 6, case number ZBA 2022 dash 42. Give your name and identify yourself, please.
Sure. Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for seeing me tonight.
Is, is the mic on?
Hello, I wasn't talking.
Thank you.
Keep closer.
Make sure yours is on should you speak. Thank you.
So, once again, my name is Robert Hanson Jr. I am 53 years old. I live three miles up the road in Nashua, 27 Dodge Street. I own an existing repair facility with an inspection license.
He is saying, could you, is your bright light on?
Yeah, just talk it more into the microphone.
Or talk, yeah, talk it closer to the mic.
You need to be close to the mic.
Can you hear me now?
Hello.
Oh, hang on.
Slide it closer to you. Slide the base.
Hello?
Is that better?
The green light's on.
It's bright?
Yeah, yeah.
Hello, hello?
Hello, try this one.
If you can move your mic over then, please.
Actually, it's much dimmer than his, so I don't know if we got a battery. Hello?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, he's, like I said, we have, we have to have this on record.
Okay, I understand, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I, I, just in any case, I'm, you know, I'm a mechanic by trade. I have never done this before, so forgive me for, you know, I'm gonna do the best I can with it. So, I have a proposal and a deposit to buy this land on 254 Daniel Webster Highway. I have an existing facility now on 75 East Tallahassee in Nashua that I have basically outgrown. I have, I am a New Hampshire used car dealer, license number 2375, and I also am a licensed New Hampshire State Inspector, 4764 is my number. And I've been a mechanic for 35 years. So, I have basically outgrown the facility that I'm in, and, um, for lack of a better word, the landlord, there's four other businesses in the building that I'm in, and the landlord doesn't really care much about the place, and, you know, there's not gonna be a lot of changes made, let's put it that way. So, I have been actively looking, by the way, I'll introduce Tim. He works for Keller Realty. He's been actively looking for a spot for me to move to. You know, whether it's to buy a piece of land, lease, or whatever, a, a thing, and, um, you know, not much luck. It's hard, it's hard out there. And this went on the market, and I, um, we started negotiations with the other realtor. And, um, as you guys know, I, I don't know if you know what the land looks like, but I did take some photos today, and it's.
I know what it looks like.
For lack of a better word, it's an eyesore.
Yeah.
And, um, you, you know, so, you know, my petition is, is, uh, this land would be no good to me without sales. I am a very small used car dealer in reference to what other dealers are. You know, I am, so I made a proposal, you know, with a, I didn't bring a poster board though, but I do have three copies. I had, um, you know, a drafter draw me up a proposal of what I'm looking to do, and, uh, for the building. But I think that's all for the planning board, but for what you guys, you know, would be looking for is, um, so, you know, I've already talked about how I've kind of outgrown it. I'd be looking to put about 25 cars in there, uh, used cars in there, and I would also, you know, have a, um, five to 10 service cars a day that I work on. Okay, um, so, you know, as of right now, I, I lauded it out for 25 spaces, but there's way more room than that in there, but it just being, you know, being courteous about it. You know, I, I kept the number low. And, um, so, as far as, um, you know, I, I talked about the, the new site. I think it's been pretty much an eyesore for quite a few years. And, um, you know, there is being this, um, kind of, we're really in the initial things of this, the initial steps of this deal, because it was an old gas station. And, um, so, but the tanks were pulled out and things like that. So, we're trying to just do it step by step and move forward. But in other words, it's useless to me if it's not, if it can't be rated for sales.
Okay.
Okay.
You filled out a form for the five criteria.
I do.
If we can go through them one at a time, and if each hesitate in case the board has a question for you.
I understand.
Thank you.
If I can apologize for one second, just for my penmanship on that. I, I have a typed out piece now, and I've changed the wording a little bit. I had two days to actually do this. The other, the other realtors kind of put me under the gun in this to get here and do this.
Don't, don't apologize, you're fine. Just get into the criteria.
I got it. Here we go.
If we have, we have a question about your penmanship, we'll ask it or not turn.
Thank you, I'm sorry. Okay, so, um.
So, the person granting the variance?
Yes, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. So, there are already many other facilities, uh, sales and garages, auto sales, on that road. I actually, on my way down tonight, I, um, you know, wrote some of them out. SJ Motors is two miles away, RH Cars is 1.4 miles away. Campers Inn is .7 miles away. Going on the north side, Merrimack Auto Sports is 1.8. Neat Auto Sales is 1.9 miles, and International Auto Group is 2.6. All of these are used car facilities with deals licenses.
Bob, you just need to read your.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I, um, I am, I am a small establishment that would not be creating any traffic or safety issues at the address.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Any questions?
Nope.
Okay, number two?
Okay, my business is a small operation, which would be car sales and service work. I could, I could, would not be creating any issues concerning the public or overall safety concerns in the area.
Thank you. Questions? Number three, please.
Granting the variance would do substantial justice because the variance would be strictly automotive sales and service. I, I run a very respectable business also. There are many other used car sales very close by on this road.
Questions? Number four, Ben? Oh, okay. Number four, please.
Granting this variance would not diminish the value of surrounding properties because it will be a new, it's gonna be a new construction, steel, 2,000 square foot building, and a total revamp of the property that has been vacant and unkept for many years.
Questions? Okay, number five, please.
Number five, so.
Hot chip.
Yep, uh, so, the proposed use is reasonable because there are many other properties close by doing the same type of business on the, on this road. And then, I, I answered the questions in, in the wrong order. Owning the following special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. Actually, I am only asking for the property to conform with the other properties in the area. I would need to sell automobiles on this property in order for it to work for me and my state licenses. This is reasonable because there are cer, other used car dealers within close proximities of this address. Yeah, that's it.
Any questions? Okay. Are you all set?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let me open this up to the public. Would anybody like to?
Smart lady.
I need to do it. Would anybody like to speak in favor of this petition? Would anybody like to speak against this petition? Would you like any further comments before I close?
No, sir.
Okay. Session is closed, and the board will discuss and make appropriate motions.
I assume you're planning to tear down the existing facility?
Absolutely.
Then I got planning board questions, but I'm not gonna do them tonight.
No, no.
Take that hat off.
I'm sure there's gonna be a bunch of them.
I am sure there is too.
Um, I, I think this is a good thing to use that property. I, by personal opinion, I think they've met all the criteria. I think it'd be good for that neighborhood to clean that up. It'd be a healthy business, I believe.
And I don't think it's putting a lot of pressure on that piece of property.
No.
And the fact that there are other sales and services along there. Again, I gotta take.
Again, I, I, I think some of the questions I have.
Our planning board.
Would be more planning board as far as the parking, um, the safety of the prior tanks, so forth.
Drainage and.
Yeah.
Don't, don't get into that because that's planning.
No, okay.
Don't sink yourself.
That's right.
Thank you.
It's going well.
Thank you.
Would anybody like to make a motion?
Ben's not raising his hand.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a variance under section 202, 2.02.4B of the zoning ordinance to permit automotive sales use in the I-1 Industrial District where it is not a permitted use. The parcel is located at 254 DW Highway in the I-1 Industrial and Aquifer Conservation Districts, Tax Map 3D-2, Lot 6, Case Number ZBA 2022-42.
And we're going to add that the board finds that the petition meets all five criteria of the variance and makes a determination that the petitioner's responses to the statutory criteria are sufficient, proved that each criterion was met, and to adopt the petitioner's responses as the board's finding of fact, subject to?
Approval.
Planning board approval.
Okay, planning board approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made by Ben to accept, seconded by Lynn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, accepted, 300. Again, there's a 30-day buffer that somebody can come forward and, you know, confront you.
I appreciate it.
Great, thank you, good luck.
Thank you for your time, gentlemen. Yeah, oh, yeah, you will. Sure.
Good luck at the.
Might not be me doing the talking.
When does this get posted on the, or when do I, when can you get written notice of this? Staff will issue a notice of decision tomorrow by email. You'll get an email tomorrow? Okay, perfect, just so I can get something off to the other agent. Thank you.
Thank you, have a good evening. Okay, does anybody have any topics of discussion?
Thank you.
Robert, do you have anything to add? Would somebody like to make a motion for the minutes?
I'd make a motion to accept the minutes on Wednesday, September 20, 21. I'll second.
Motion by Ben, seconded by Lynn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, approved, 300. And last but not least, seconded for adjournment? You don't? All right, let's go, let's go for it. Thank you very much.